All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to our October competition board meeting. Everybody wants to stand up and have Commissioner Shaker do our presentation and then I'll do the speech.
Well, it's great. Our gracious, kind, and heavenly Father were thankful for the beauties of today, for the gift of life, for the gift of assistance, and ask that you would guide and bless in our discussions this evening. We give you thanks for our staff. We're thankful for our military personnel. And as we lead into discussions this evening, we certainly invite your presence to give us wisdom, clarity of mind. I pray these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good. Then we have a home on.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner McHale.
Here.
Commissioner Malone.
Here.
Commissioner Rosado.
Here.
Commissioner Shaker.
Here.
Commissioner Younger.
Here.
And Sharon Hollis.
Here. Thank you, Melissa. Item number four, adopt the agenda.
Make the motion to adopt the agenda is presented second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Malone. Any discussion? Sharon, I don't know if he has been on the board. It says presented, but it's only something he called, he won't be here, so I don't think. Okay. No, that's fine. Also, I guess if we could remove eleven E, is that okay if we do that? Can we remove eleven E also? Can we do it again? The eleven E is a sheriff's office incentive plan. I don't believe quite ready there, quite there yet, so.
I'll amend that.
Thank you.
Make the motion to adopt the agenda with the amendments to.
Remove E.
Yeah, remove eleven E and for eleven G, that'll be presented by Commissioner Ross.
Perfect. We have a motion by Commissioner Baker with amendments, and second by Commissioner Malone with amendments. All in favor with an "I"?
Aye.
Close saying, motion carries. Thank you. Item number five, consent to agenda.
I'm glad for the consent agenda to be adopted.
Motion by Commissioner Shaker, and second by Commissioner Younger. Stephen Dunn, all in favor with an "I"?
Aye.
Opposed to say, motion carries. Moving on, now I would like to open the meeting to public comment. This is a very important timeline agenda and it gives us an opportunity to hear from all of you. I would ask that during your comments, you address the board of commissioners and not the staff or audience members. In order to be respectful of everyone's time, we ask that you keep your comments before enter us. This will keep track of time. We hear the alarm to wrap up our comments. If you'd like to give us more information, you can email us or the county administrator. When you come to speak, please tell us your name and address for the record. With that, I will open the meeting up to public comments. Come on up.
I'm gonna jump up first. Deborah Day Melzior, I like to prosecute attorney, Ellen Cole, and look care of the road. I want to thank you guys and acknowledge that you've taken really meaningful steps in supporting prosecutor's office, and especially with the salary adjustments, the technology advancements, the investment in that. It has improved our efficiency across the board, the entire criminal justice system, from us to law enforcement to the defense are all benefiting from that. However, as the years go on, it's become increasingly clear that even with those improvements, our staffing levels are not sufficient to meet the ongoing need that we have. Dozens of cases are still waiting for review by an investigator or licensed attorney, and not because of inefficiency, but because there's simply earning hours in a day or bodies in chairs to be able to do it. So, our office is responsible for nearly 100% of all the criminal cases in the county. In last fiscal year, we reviewed approximately 2,414 referrals and authorized approximately 1,777 prosecutions. But that's only counting the things that come in from law enforcement, that not tickets or PPOs or bond violations or anything like that. Just the raw data of cases that they send to us and say, we can look at this and see if there is a crime here, and if so, please authorize it. So, that doesn't include abuse of the law procedure, that sort of thing either. We currently have four licensed attorneys, which includes myself, handling all of those felony and misdemeanor prosecutions, plus a law school graduate who assists under our supervision, who will be taking the bar of sand by February. So, right now, the contract for the color defender's office has a roster of nine licensed attorneys. So, according to the Prosecuting Attorneys Association standards, the level of workload for just what we did last year, reviewing and authorizing, would be something that it should have at least six full-time prosecutors to meet the ethical provision standards. The commission's support has allowed us to raise the pay and get really strong candidates. Having Angelique with 25 years' experience and Gary with about double that has been amazing. We've been able to keep up as best we can. However, it's, you know, with those gains, we're still not operating at sustainable level. We're doing more with less, and it's not possible to continue in this case without risk being burnouts, errors, delay of the process. So, we've looked at different ways to maximize efficiency, and I brought to the board a request for a prosecutor investigator, frankly, because I didn't think we could find another licensed attorney that would be a good fit and able to help us. We bridge the gap between law enforcement and the prosecution, assist with reviewing those requests that come in, get rid of our backlog, and then once the cases are in the system, help with the digital evidence, locating witnesses, prepping for trial, going over all of that. Unfortunately, it was not well received, or I just not in the budget at this time, but I really would like the commission to reconsider that. I also, we have qualified candidates, multiple qualified candidates for that position that are interested. I also received just this week an inquiry from a licensed attorney who has 25 years of law enforcement experience, who wants to come on as a staff attorney. There's opportunities that we had not had in decades. So, with that, we're asking that the commission reconsider. What is this going to cost us? Well, I mean, everything costs something, right? But, you know, we're talking $100,000 was the ballpark for a prosecutor investigator, which included the salary and the benefits. Without that, if we did a 1099, like the MTC contract attorneys, we could get significantly cheaper because we wouldn't be providing those salary benefits. And we could potentially do that same thing with this candidate who is a licensed attorney, because they have availability of their benefits from their prior position. So, I'm just asking that you guys consider that, and I'm not gonna be able to stay for the whole meeting because I also, if people are done in time. Seven o'clock tonight is the candle at middle for DAS's domestic assault and sexual services. Unfortunately, it happened to be on the same night as this, so I'm going there to speak and continue to fight for credibility and fair justice for our campus that's locally on this earth. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else want to address the commission? Come on up.
Welcome. Hi. Aprilus, One O'Quarry, Stotchen, and White Pigeon. So, I have a couple of things to discuss. So, I'm gonna start with the 911 millage that's on this ballot. Why are we spending taxpayer money since we're all concerned about money, holding a special election which costs $5,000 just to put something on the ballot? On top of paying the clerks, the deputies, the poll workers, and everything like that, why couldn't they wait until next November rather than spending more money just doing a special election for one thing? My next thing is, is agenda item 11C, road commission compensation. I heard about this a while ago, and I was FOIAing every road commission around here. And I contacted Saint, or contacted Saint Joe, which is us, Calhoun Zoo County, Cass County, Van Buren, Alleghan, Oakland, Kent, and Hillsdale. A lot of them roughly are about $6,000 per, $6,000 a year. A lot of them hold benefits, but a lot of them do not. So, with that being said, we need to look at whether giving them a pay increase is worth it, or adding a couple of benefits onto it. Because like Alleghan, they're appointed, they only have life insurance. Saint Joseph is appointed, they don't have anything. Cass County doesn't have anything. Van Buren only has life insurance. Oakland County is elected, are appointed, they don't hold anything either. Kent County only has 401K, they're appointed. Hillsdale is elected, they have medical, dental, and visiting. And I always bring this up is because at the September meeting at the road commission where I had to leave early, but I go back and check the meeting minutes, it was brought up at the very end of that meeting. So, we need to look into, rather than just approving it, we need to look into whether it's gonna save us more money to add a couple of benefits, or to give them a full pay increase. I understand our pay increase for that hasn't been for 20 years. But I know that Kent County's hasn't been for 24 years, and they don't plan on increasing it as well.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for coming here. Rebecca Shane, 38, South Washington, and constable. A few years back, maybe 15, Commissioner Shaker and I were with a group from Fabius who attended public hearings over in Niles in regard to peaker collar plans that they wanted to put in southwest Michigan. Commissioner Shaker called me the next morning, wanted to know if I'd slept. It was scary. What we learned from these specialists from Minnesota and New Jersey was, if you live or work or spend a lot of time within 500 feet of electrical transmission, you are in a cancer zone. We're discussing batteries right now. We're getting surrounded by solar panels in a state that's second only to Washington State for the number of cloudy days a year. Why are they picking on us? Well, we're strategically located. Be careful. I'm seeing them on roofs. If you're within these 500 feet of these transmission lines, these great big tall poles, they've been putting all over the county, same thing. We have got to be smarter and careful. Be careful. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Anybody else wants to address the commission? Come on up. Going before you die, you're gonna just have to hold for four minutes, just to be respectful of everyone's time, so you're fine.
I'm gonna try to beat my previous record.
All right, it's not like you're here. We appreciate you coming.
Good evening, commissioners.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Anthony Mayer. I'm a licensed builder, a single father, and a lifelong resident of Saint Joseph County. I spent my adult life building this community, donating my time, equipment, and resources to create playgrounds, ballfields, homes, and hope. I built the guard up hit and kickball field at Andrews Elementary School. I helped build the Skidmore Park Playground, and through the Three Rivers Housing Development Corporation, I worked to improve affordable housing for local families. But this past year, my time, my savings, and my peace have been consumed by lawfare. Lockport Township has spent public funds pursuing unnecessary legal actions that have already cost me over $20,000. Every dollar, every hour that once went towards community work now goes towards defending my property and my civil rights from selective enforcement. After two separate legal opinions warned the township against pursuing me, the township fired their attorney and hired a new law firm, and amended ordinance 9911A in a way that stripped me of my grandfather rights and violated Michigan law. They claim to act on community complaints, yet they admit no written complaints, are taken, leading enforcement to personal discretion, a system ripe for abuse. It was even acknowledged publicly that taxpayer money was used to pay trustee Donna Grubbs' personal legal expenses without the required public vote. At the same time, supervisor Mark Major's family member is paid to maintain the township's website, which still lacks complete records and meeting minutes and has several broken links. Meanwhile, the township continues to violate the Freedom of Information Act, MCL 15231, by denying citizens access to public documents. Too many residents now feel trapped in a system that treats people as case numbers instead of neighbors. In my own case, court records were altered after I filed a complaint and my previously granted jury trial was revoked without explanation. I share this not to attack the courts, but because these experiences show why citizens are losing faith in local government and justice. Families are losing savings, citizens are losing trust, and those responsible face no consequences while the law firms profit. Tonight, I'm asking for change. Change in leadership that values transparency over retaliation. Change in policies requiring written complaints and open records. And change in public engagement because silence allows this to continue. If you see abuse of power, speak up. Attend meetings. Ask where your tax dollars are going. Demand fairness and accountability for everyone, not just those in power. I've spent my life building this community, now it's time for our local government to start building trust again. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Anyone else wanting to address the commission? All right, so you guys will move on to presentations, which we don't have any presentations on the agenda. Number eight, county administrators agenda.
Thank you, everyone. Just a few things that they show all on. Obviously, budget preparation has taken up a significant portion of our time over the past few months. I want to send my appreciation out to department heads and staff for the responsibility and thoughtfulness that has worked that process. Hoping that we're nearly completion, having a full budget to make our probation, the upcoming hearing, and our number 18 meeting is the goal. Open enrollment, we are also preparing for the upcoming measures of enrollment period, so begin on number 10. We're saving updated plan materials and instructions very soon. Make more intrusion mitigation in the jail, just an update here. Better communication with Eagle regarding the make more intrusion investigation. An interim measure, they deploy two air purifier units at the jail in the areas where elevated levels were found. Based on the data collected today, transition TP is not expected to significantly impact major levels, but Eagle will still be testing other rounds of make more than sampling. Central courts renovation project, relocation planning, as we discussed at executive, we're actively working on a comprehensive relocation plan for staff currently inside the courts building, temporarily relocating folks, kind of construction, both significantly reducing credit timeline and help avoid structures daily operations. More information we share is those plans are finalized. As you know, millage, as you all know, the E911, the E911 central dispatch millage renewal will appear on the number four ballot promoters, Saint Joseph County. Full of requests of renewal and reduced rate of .9 mill for five years down from current rate. If approved, full point central services and operations, who's central dispatch center. Stacy, the central dispatch director, Erin, have been attending local service group meetings and definitely radio and social media outreach to help inform the public about renewal and important services that's for us. Our annual halfway recognition event will be held in January this year, typically we do it in October or November, but our agenda's been pulled, so I will get through that in January, which will do a little bit of a later journey. We'll take time to recognize and celebrate staff and their years of service in the county, so details on that will be coming as well. And to bring both funds of the fall season and show our appreciation, we'll be holding the donuts this Saturday, 27th, for all departments. In addition, several offices have signed up for a pumpkin decorating contest, and each department will display their pumpkins, and both have a winner in the better than the commissioner's department. That's all here, that's right.
Very good. Any questions for our county administrator?
For the public certification.
Yep.
For the public certification, can you tell us what happens if the 911 millage were not taxed? What are the consequences of that not taxed?
Yeah, so it's a significant budget that would obviously impact all the operations associated with central dispatch, so the economy would have to look at some new ways to fund that department, which is about a millionish. Or yeah. Yeah, so actually the economy would naturally build it, it would have a very difficult time to fund the harvest.
I had to change these spaces, and Erin, and as they go off, the service club, so I think they're really proud of advocating for that. It is a big deal, it's our roots and responders, you know, making sure that we're communicating with them, and you know, I suppose it's something to be aware of like this. Any other questions for the county administrator? All right, very good. Thank you for that report. Moving on, committee reports and appointments. Any commissioners want to committee reports? Good. Okay, all right, moving on. We don't have anything on the unfinished business, onto new business. The first item on new business, 2025 Saint Joseph County apportionment report and resolution presented by Congressman Wolf.
Good evening, commissioners. Last Tuesday, the executive meeting, I presented you with the 2025 apportionment report, which is a compilation of all the millages that the 48 separate local taxing authorities throughout Saint Joseph County have requested to allow me to look at current tax year. On your behalf, the equalization department has verified that all the millages are legally permissible, and all required millage reductions have been applied. So unless you have any further questions, I'm recommending that the commission adopt a resolution approving the apportionment report as presented.
Second chair. You have a motion by Commissioner Malone.
Secondly, I request a need amended motion to void.
So, okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Malone, as well as waiting to read, and second by Commissioner Rosado. Any discussion? Again, just to reiterate what Josh just did a great job of saying, is that we are essentially just making sure that these things are legally sound, and that they are being reduced by the corporate mathematics, like that's what they do for us, and as long as we go through that process, we're a good chick.
Most of these are just putting the millages, the different taxing entities everywhere out, and gone through steps to get put in place, and ensure that they're.
Yep, and they've all been approved by the local authorities to allow them, based off of the needs.
Very good, with that, this is a resolution, and I'm really good at whatever you're writing. We're gonna go through, roll off, please.
Commissioner Malone?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner McHale?
Have you seen me?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Younger?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaker?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosado?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hollis?
Yes, thank you, Josh. Motion passes. Very good. Next item on the agenda, fiscal year 2026 Child Care Fund budget presented by Judge Devin Kane. Welcome, Judge Kane.
Thank you. You want to move, all right?
This isn't a meeting for you.
Oh, it wasn't, no? I'm wrong, it wasn't. I'm just here to present the Child Care Fund as it goes from October 1st to September 30th. Probably got a budget agreed to by the AGHS as to where we think we are gonna be for the next year. I think we presented a pretty detailed packet at executive, what it covers. It covers anything from JDT, staffing, and our CTAG group, and things like that, that they provide our funding for, so. If there's any further questions?
Any questions for the committee?
Great report. I moved to approve the fiscal year 2026 Child Care Fund budget as presented.
Step one. We have a motion by Commissioner Baker, and second by Commissioner Malone. Further discussion? All in favor with an "I"?
Aye.
Close to say, motion carries. Thank you, and we appreciate it. All right, moving on, Z, road commissioner compensation resolution, presented by Eric Harper. Welcome.
Hello. I'm not actually presenting the resolution, I'm, I'm advocating. Am I limited to four minutes on it? Don't worry, don't worry, I'm not gonna go there. As most of you know, I've been on the county boards and various commissions for many years. It started in 1993 with my appointment to the Board of Public Works and the Salloways Management Planning Committee, both of which I'm still part of. I spent six years as a county commissioner, and now I've been about 14 or somewhere in there as a road commissioner. I say all this because I wanna make it very clear that it is my opinion, and I know you share this opinion, that to be a public official, to be a public servant, the most important thing is to be fiscally responsible and conservatively responsible with taxpayers' money. That, for me, is the bottom line, okay? We gotta be very careful with how we spend our taxpayers' money. During my tenure as road commissioner, we have completed money-saving efficiencies to the road commission's operation. First thing was the consolidation from three separate operations in Three Rivers, Colon, and Centerville, down to just the one in Centerville. While that whole thing was very unpopular with the public, the consolidation was exceedingly important in accomplishing the goal of spending taxpayers' money in a fiscally responsible manner. This decision and that operation, that whole thing, has resulted in a dropping of $400,000 to $500,000 in operational expense per year that has enabled us to go put that money back into reference. However, it also enabled us to fund the remodel of the existing road commission facility, which was in such bad shape that when it used to rain, the rain would come through and drip onto the, onto the copy machine, okay? That's how bad that building was. We fixed that. We now believe that that building and the facilities that came along with it puts us in a position to be good for 50 years, other than routine maintenance. It helped us reduce the workforce from 42 to 33 employees. It helps, helped us reduce the age of our fleet from 13 years to less than 10. An interesting side note to that is when a surrounding county, named the CASS, when we have a stormstorm and they have a piece of a truck that goes down, they don't have spare. They come to us and ask us to loan them a truck. Now, we don't loan it to them, okay, but we do have a spare, and that's thanks to the efficiency that we've been able to gain through some of this.
We use the blower, right?
Yes, wow. There are others, okay? And all of this was accomplished without taking on any debt, and we still retain a decent fund balance, a situation that is very unusual for road commissions in the state of Michigan. So, now, my turn is up at the end of the year. So now, my turn is up at the end of the year. And so I am here to ask you to pass a resolution beginning January 1st that will increase the base pay of the road commissioners from forty-eight hundred and sixty dollars to seventy-five hundred. It was just mentioned that we haven't seen an increase in twenty years. That's actually an understatement. You've seen, I think, the resolution that was passed in two thousand, okay? It's twenty-five years. If if we had applied the inflation rate to the existing to the existing base pay, the rate would now, the the compensation would be now well over nine thousand dollars a year. And we're asking for seventy-five hundred. We're asking for about half of what that raise would have been. The spreadsheet that I gave you during your executive committee meeting shows what the compensation is for all eighty-three counties. And by the way, every single county gets base pay. Some counties, as was mentioned earlier, get benefits in addition to the base pay, okay? Life insurance, health insurance, retirement, 401K, all that stuff. We are definitely not asking for that. That is not in my idea of being fiscally responsible taxpayers' money, okay? We are not doing that. But every county gets a base pay. Some are less than what this is, but you will find if I I believe if you had a chance to take it, to take a look, that this looks solidly in the middle and many of these counties are going through increases as well. And by the way, that that spreadsheet was not created by our office. That was created by the CRA, the County Road Association. Public Act Fifty-One limits the amount that a that a road commission can spend on administrative costs to ten percent of the amount that we receive through the Michigan Transportation Fund. So I had I had our staff calculate, number one, where we are and number two, what this twenty-five hundred dollar per year for five guy for five people is going to do to that to to that administrative rate, okay? We are currently, the administrative rate compared to the revenue that we get from MTF is at six point eight. This increase will take us to six point nine, still well below the ten percent that that the Public Act Six Fifty or Public Act Fifty-One limits us to. Finally, I think you really do need to think about the facts. Twenty-five years. We need to have good people apply for these positions and that means that you need to have a reasonable a reasonable compensation for that, okay? Thank you for your consideration. That's it.
Thank you. We appreciate it. We appreciate that you've been mentioning that executive also.
Is there anybody here need to gather?
What's your offer?
You did well.
I guess we're good. All right. Do you have any questions?
I hope you got the key, my friend. Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
Chairman, I move to approve the road commission compensation resolution as presented in a way brief.
I have a motion by Commissioner Rosado, so close second by Commissioner Canada. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, does that mean a motion?
Yep, you're in, Commissioner Rosado.
One of those, a couple of the things that I wanted to mention on behalf of the road commission because I, along with Commissioner Baker and Commissioner Younger, we are liaisons of the road commission. We attend those meetings and see how they run and what they do and the headaches that they get and 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 the praises that they get. In addition to that, one thing that the chair did not mention is that this compensation that we're authorizing today, it comes out of their budget, not ours, so it has no effect on our budget. The other thing is that the law says that the county appoints the road commission and set the compensation even though it doesn't come out of our budget. So that's why we're doing this today. And one of the things that he also failed to mention is, and I want to mention, is they have zero debt. One of the most efficient departments running in this county, they have zero debt.
I had that in my notes too.
Yeah, yeah. And then one last thing I wanted to say is that their equipment is modern, well, and they have a regular on schedule for regular replacement. And, you know, oftentimes you don't see that good plan take place and yet this whole commission does that in the interest of saving and spending county money. So because of that is why I recommend we approve the request. And what's also in the resolution that was not mentioned is that that we also give them the same percentage increase that the county gets on a yearly basis so that we don't hold them under twenty-five years without regular financing. Their diligence.
So you want to add this?
No, it's in the resolution. Number four. Item number four, under the last, therefore, letter of the year.
Thank you, Commissioner Rosado.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Chairman. I don't oppose giving an increase. I still think that we should put it over the period of three years, bringing it up right. As much as we're fiscally responsible, it doesn't matter which county comes out, it's still taxpayer money. So it doesn't matter if it comes out of the road commission, it comes out of the general fund, if it comes out of law enforcement, wherever it's coming from, it's still taxpayer money. I'm not opposing giving them that where they belong. I just think we should do it and stuff over the next three years. It's just might and then of course it's not a three-year, putting in whatever increase the county commission gets, like we got as far as after that it's implemented that they would give that annually.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Commissioner Chair.
Thank you, Eric. You did a nice job summarizing the facts. And as a commissioner, and I'm not speaking for the whole commission, but I am a little embarrassed that it went twenty-five years before anybody thought about how, you know, road commission's doing a great job, as was pointed out. And there should have been dedicated increases over time so that it didn't get to this large increase. And I support the motion, but I also am appreciative of Commissioner Malone's remarks that it would have been nice that we considered maybe a stepping stone sort of thing. But regardless, you know, I think the team's doing a great job over there, the commissioners. I think we have a great road commission in general and I do support the resolution and I'm glad we built that cost of living.
Thank you. More briefly, what two people were here twenty years ago? It was like a helpless situation.
Twenty-five years.
That's why I said I'm not speaking, but Commissioner is here.
So wait, she's trying to write us wrong.
Very good. We appreciate those comments. Just for the record, just so everyone's, I know you compare waiting to the resolution reading. Like, actually what we're doing is if if it passes, the if the resolution passes, it increases base pay to seventy-five hundred dollars down to the road commissioners on an annual basis. They would again, to relieve this problem going forward, they would get the same cost of living adjustment annually that the county commission is receiving. And then the third is the per diem gets to going to fifty dollars for a half a day and ninety-five dollars for a for a full day. Very good.
Point order here a little bit. Um, we usually wave the second reading.
Yeah.
And we really didn't have the first reading. I mean, I still think we should have the first reading.
Can we can we wave the first reading?
This would be considered the first reading.
Can we wave that or do we need to do the reading?
Yes, we have to read. Does Commissioner Baker have to read this whole thing?
Actually, I believe the gentleman that made the motion next to me.
Either way. I don't have an agree, but I typically would wave the second reading if we never had a
We did take the way with second reading, not first reading. It is in, all of this is in the board package, so anyone who downloaded it on the internet will got it previously. It'll be in the record.
And it's my understanding it's also on the website and it's distributed to media if it passed. But I'm prepared to read this lengthy resolution if you like.
Again, I defer, listen, you know, we need to do the
I'm I'm unaware that actually it's to be public and wouldn't say that.
I didn't think so either, so I didn't mean
Or if they wave the second, by the way.
You wave the first. I will have to wave the first. We didn't come back and go over to do that. Again, all of this information is out there. If you have any questions with the tax act director or the manager or else, we need to do as well, so. With that being said, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a roll call?
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Younger?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hackler?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosado?
Yes.
Commissioner Malone?
No.
And Chairman Hoffman?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, coming down to E, Sheriff's Office Uniform Budget Amendment presented by Commissioner Long.
Welcome. Thank you. Honorable Chairman and Commissioners. Come to you requesting a budget amendment for the fund for uniform purchase for deputies, road officers, corrections and court security. It's to replace the already unserviceable and difficult to purchase uniforms for their staff.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for the chairman? We have
So who would you guys present it?
A motion by Commissioner Malone. Support. We have a second by Commissioner Shaker. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm just moving forward, you guys are here to the to the sheriff's office and and just kind of feel how things go. But I I feel that it would be better moving forward if we come and ask for the amendment before we actually buy a uniform.
This amendment would be forcing uniforms that are not purchased. It'd be making up some that were purchased. I'll say yes, sir, and I will go into the rest. So, yes.
Any other questions? I will say I appreciate what the sheriff's office is doing. I know I've said it from here before that the sheriff's office hasn't felt bad as far as image because of the previous administration. And I appreciate what you're doing. I think this is a part of that. I think it's a good thing. I know ultimately a part of it, I understand that uniforms are worn and torn and, you know, just, you know, yeah, just the annual expense of of obviously refreshing that, but I do appreciate what Sheriff Spence and his staff are doing. At the beginning, just going forward in the sheriff's office. So, thank you for that. We have a motion on the floor. And I believe this one can be regular. All in favor of an aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the same?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Thank you. We appreciate it. All right, moving on. Uh, E has been removed. F, St. Joseph County Indigenous Defensive Member, presented by Keith Stick. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. I hope you're all well. I'm just here to reiterate what we discussed last week at the executive board. I'm happy to say at about three forty-five this afternoon in Lansing, our grant was approved and our whole our plan was approved. So we will have the state money as is legislatively necessary to even have the program that we are dealing with and funding a program. So these are our roster of attorneys that we've presented to you and I'm asking for your approval. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
So who has presented?
The motion by Commissioner Malone. Second.
Second by Commissioner Rosado. Any discussion? So you're not?
Uh, oh. Commissioner, you can, can you amend this list by mean halfway through the year? You know, one of these guys drops, how can you add others to it?
Yes, there is actually, and I if it's not in the sheet that you were given, I apologize, there is actually an amendment. So if somebody break, if somebody has to drop off or we have to add, that that can be added. We have done that in the past.
Good question. Thank you. All in favor of an aye?
Aye.
Close to saying? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Appreciate it. All right, moving on to G, Operation Green Light Resolution presented by Commissioner Rosado.
Mr. Chairman, once again, I got stuck with a very lengthy resolution that I'm going to, when I made my motion to approve this resolution, in fact, I was making a motion, move to approve the 2025 Operation Green Light Resolution.
We have a motion, support. We have a motion by Commissioner Rosado, second by Commissioner Shaker.
Can I wave second? Prepare for first reading. Okay.
Yep.
And and for the general public's information, this is the same thing we did last year, except I've been I've been told by county staff and and the Veterans Affairs Office that this year is going to be even better than last year. But we are encouraging the county participate in Operation Green Light where we will light up the courthouse with the green light in support of the veterans. And it will be on the fourth, it will be eleventh. And then I'm happy to report that the city of Greer, the city of Sertis, along with the Constantine Township, they agree that they're ready to do the same thing. So it could be a, not just county-wide, because we said there's going to come in, but we have other municipalities and government units who are participating in Operation Green Light this year. So I think Commissioner Shaker might have a couple of additional comments to add.
Sure.
Yeah, you may recall last year, one night I took a picture. Our courthouse all lit up and it is beautiful and the staff does a great job of making it happen. But in addition to that, what I noticed is a lot of our businesses also on the street participated. So as you went down through Main Street here, seemed like there was a sea of green. That picture also was presented to our Michigan Association of Counties where at May, this month, we haven't gotten your newsletter yet, our courthouse is pictured as a showcase and encouragement to other counties to participate in Operation Green Light. So I commend the staff for their energies and thank their Commissioner Rosado for bringing this all.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaker.
Commissioner? And I think that you'll probably find it's a step that they can't hire or do with that lighting that they put in a year or two ago where they changed the lights and killed fire over there along with that supporting me like Sony and the staff that all worked so hard to bring the community involved.
Yep, very good. Any other discussion? I appreciate Commissioner Rosado, Commissioner Shaker, I appreciate our veteran fairness directors from Sony and all the effort that he puts into this. It is, you know, obviously we all should and do support our veterans and that makes great sense. So we appreciate it. All right, with that being said, it's a resolution. Do we have a roll call?
Commissioner Shaker?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosado?
Yes.
Commissioner Younger?
Yes.
Commissioner Malone?
Yes.
Commissioner Hackler?
Yes.
And Chairman Hoffman?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Onto our next item, letter of understanding, 2026 Health Insurance Premiums presented by Justice K.
At the, one of our, I think our first budget chapter, the insurance gave you a role to negotiate with our union groups and nerves to our 2026 health insurance premiums. So if you recall, the county received a significantly higher increase in our Re-Trust and Shield renewal rates for 2026 than we have our service to the past. This put a bit of a hardship on our employees. There's a hard cap that's set by the state which is the maximum that a municipality can spend for self-insurance for employees. In our union contracts, we actually negotiated that to ninety percent. So with the high renewal rate for Re-Trust and Shield along with that ninety percent of the hard cap rate that we pay and then in addition, the state only increased that hard cap rate this year by like two percent. Again, it created a hardship with paying to employee premiums and and how it was worked out. So we have worked with, looking at the numbers, I know there are three plans that we felt would be fiscally responsible for the county as well as making, continuing to make these plans across for our staff. So we were able to negotiate with the unions on those different premium contributions strategies and had to report on the unions to agree and have ratified those letters of understanding that I we had taken to them. So what I guys would personally is just cool for me to go ahead and authorize, authorize me to sign those letters of understanding to the African Union groups. So this will be it all.
I move to authorize the county ministry to design letters of understanding for 2026 health insurance premiums with parking units, AFSCME, all units, FOP, all units, district court, COAM and POAM as presented.
Very good. We have a motion by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Malone. Any further discussion? This is, thank you for your efforts and work, and we need to just, um, we are not, unfortunately, we're having a difficult situation. Commissioner Schaefer and I are on board health. This is something that health agency is going through. This is something that private employers are going through. Health insurance, health costs seem to be increasing considerably. So unfortunately, we're all in this together, and I'm glad that the unions obviously see that and are very good with that, so. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor of that? Aye. Close to saying, motion carries. Very good. That is all we have on our union business. We'll move on to item on the agenda, number twelve. Commissioner Kamau's time. Commissioner Rizado, good. Good?
Yeah, I'm, well, I was going to make the comment, but, all right. I am glad, I've been worried to all agree on the Operation Green Light. I think it's very important to recognize our veterans and United States, we appreciate that.
Commissioner Kamau?
I just thank everybody for being here tonight, and all our work everybody puts into this, so. Really appreciate it.
Commissioner Younger?
Yes, thank you for coming. Thanks for the staff for, for the budget. I know there's some difficult situations, not situations, little situations and decisions that we need to make, so. Thanks for your understanding, and we're trying to get everything, everything that they want, but, like I said before, it was your own thing, so.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Schaefer?
Yeah, just a couple comments. First of all, really enjoy having audience participation. So thank you all for coming. The other thing that I mentioned in the area agency on aging committee this morning was that working with the budgeting process. I appreciate how we handle moving through that budget process. But it is very difficult as county commissioners, as we sit in the middle of the room, and surrounding us are departmental friends and neighbors that all have great requests, and everybody wanting to do an even better job. And it's hard to limit the revenues that we pass out, of course, without doing excessive taxation. But I do appreciate those departments that I hope have a kind understanding, because it is very difficult to sit around the table there, listen to all great requests, and then having to move some of those out a year or two. So thank you, Angie and Teresa, for helping orchestrate the process and going through with it.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Malone?
Stacy, what was the village term this time, the Friday? Okay, which will align us, who is, is possible to align here, right? And that, so just going back to that, it was something that, you know, was not, you know, thought about the last time that it was put out for election on the nine-one-one, that was set up in this committed one up with general license, so we don't have that cost going forward. But that being said, we can't afford to go a year without a village in order to just align that. The cost would be a whole lot more, if not nothing else. Thank you.
Who was on the panel that mentioned that?
You know.
No, it's your first one.
I was a newbie on that one.
I did, I did, I was just kidding.
No, I admit it, I have no problem with that. I got broad shoulders. Poor Rick over here.
It's all right, bro.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I'm gonna say things I have done before. All the department heads and their representatives show up. We don't get a department head here. And it means a lot when you guys show up and we care to see what's going on.
Very good. Well, thank you for all for coming. I have a safe, Travis, all kind of, I feel whatever wants to say too. Budget process is, I appreciate, you know, we have seven county commissioners, and everybody has their own thoughts and ideas and priorities. And being in the same room together, working with the department heads, working with Teresa and Angie and their staff, I really do think that the county residents can be proud of, you know, sometimes, like I said, in the budget workshop, this is how the sausage is made, and you get to see exactly what goes into that. If we had, you know, if we could fund everything and not take any taxes in, we'd do that, obviously, but we have a budget to follow, and we have to go according to that budget and try to do the best job we can possibly can. So we appreciate your participation, we appreciate the time that the county employees and staff, and yeah, we don't want to do the best we can, so. With that, I'll accept the motion for adjournment. I'm holding second. Commissioner Schaefer, Commissioner Malone with the support. All in favor of that? Aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.